The August 14th meeting of the Sherwood Planning Commission will please come to order. Secretary, if you will call the roll.
Martin.
Here.
Middleton.
Here.
Bruno.
Here.
Gillum.
Here.
I see a forum. First item of business will be to look at the, we have minutes from the June 12th meeting that we didn't have the last time. Have you had an opportunity to look at them?
Yes, motion to approve.
Thank you. Full roll.
Martin.
Aye.
Middleton.
Aye.
Bruno.
Aye.
Gillum.
Aye.
Second item is the minutes from the July 10th meeting of the commission. Have you had a chance to look at them? Any corrections or additions?
Again, motion to approve.
Thank you. Full roll.
Martin.
Aye.
Middleton.
Aye.
Bruno.
Aye.
Gillum.
Aye.
Ordinance number 2183 regarding accessory structures.
This is a, will be a public hearing. First, we get an overview of what's being proposed.
Uh, yes. Uh, I'm sorry, I wasn't planning to present this particular item. So, there's current language in 10.16. An accessory building placed on a lot of less than one acre shall maintain an interior side and rear yard of not less than four feet. And then in 1.7, an accessory building placed on a lot, one acre or more shall maintain interior yard and rear yard setback not less than 10% of the average lot width up to a maximum required setback of 25 feet. The language before you would replace those two with a chart. That chart is shown on the screen. If it's a half acre or under, the setback would be four feet. If it's more than one half acre and less than one half acre and up to 200 square feet, then it would be four feet. If it's over 200 square feet, then it's eight feet. Or regardless of size, if it's over a 10-foot sidewall height, then it's eight foot. And then if it's an acre or more in size, it would maintain an interior and rear yard setback not less than 10% of the average lot width up to a maximum required setback of 25 feet. That's, that's the current language that's been drafted. Additionally, there's a couple edits that needs to be made to this, but the language would be changing, removing some of these references to side yards, rear yards that are contained in the R1 district as well as the R4 district and replace that to reference only principal structures.
Okay, I'm calling the public hearing open. Does anybody wish to make a comment on this proposal? Seeing none, I'm closing the public hearing. Would you show the chart I made? I, I feel compelled to talk on the issue. It seems to me that we're trying to put a Band-Aid on a broken leg. Ever since I've been on board, I have tried to understand all of the setback and lot coverage and lot width requirements. And I put together, when I first got here, I made this chart. Or one kind of like it for all of the zoning districts because I was trying to get a handle on what's required. And thanks to Andy and James, they finally gave me some perspective about what's been bothering me about all of this all along. Aside from the fact that it's really complicated. Um, it kind of boils down in my mind to all of the gymnastics we play with setbacks and lot coverage and lot size. And I think it's useful to reflect on what the purpose of a setback is so that we can start clarifying what we want to do about it. A setback is essentially trying to keep two buildings separate. The basic reason for a setback, especially on the side or the rear, is fire protection. State Fire Code says you need to keep buildings 10 feet apart. So, anything we're doing here is just kind of dancing around that kind of minimum requirement. The one thing that has bothered me all along has been a requirement in most of these zoning districts that the side yard setback is either four feet or it's eight feet. It's 10% of the average lot width. I thought, guys, there's, I've never seen that before in all the years I've worked this. The setback has nothing to do with the size of the lot. It has everything to do with keeping buildings separate from each other. So, all of these permutations that we've been looking around kind of dances around that. If the state fire code says buildings need to be 10 feet apart, understand that it can be less with a firewall, but they need to be 10 feet apart. And it just seems to me that the side yard needs to be five feet on each side. That side, that makes it simple instead of all the dancing around that we've been doing. And when I put this together, I really was trying to figure out what are all the permutations that are required in the individual requirements? And what I'm discovering is that we've got overlaps. For instance, I didn't discover this until today, that there is a requirement, there's a definition in the current regulations on covered and uncovered decks. It's repeated three different places in the regulations. Now, there's, there's that kind of duplication built into this, which, which concerns me. The language in what's now going to be section, I guess, 10, or was it section nine and 10? Is supposed to be overarching. Does it apply to every residential district or just some? I looked at basically the R1 district to see what kind of issues were popped up because 80% of all zoning in the city of Sherwood is R1. And so, we're having a problem, that's where it would show up. And I discovered a couple of things that are just interesting to me. One is that lot coverage includes all structures, except that higher densities can be approved as part of a final plat, which doesn't quite make sense to me. The size of a setback should not be dictated by the size of the lot. That has nothing to do with separation of buildings. And the thing that really concerns me is that as I was trying to go through all of this stuff, I was seeing gaps. In some places, some of these zoning districts don't have any other requirements like some of the others do. And I think this is just something that's been accreting over past 30 years. So, my concern is that rather than try and fix one little piece, which may just further compound the problem, we need to fix it all. And what we need to fix first and foremost is let's be real clear about what setbacks ought to be. And my sense is five feet. Five feet on each side. And I think at least for R1 and R2, now the R2 requirements don't even include a setback for side yard. There's just enough missing. What I would prefer to see would be something like the chart that James mentioned at the front end, perhaps for each district because the requirements may be unique. What we've got right now are some requirements built in as text, which are hard to follow, and some requirements that are built in as general that supposedly apply to all residential, but they don't really. And that needs to be clarified. I don't want to take something to the city council that isn't completely thought through and, and whole. That's kind of where I'm at. I don't know if any of you had noticed that.
Hope it could.
And it wasn't until we really started having this discussion about accessory buildings and setbacks and so forth, that it started getting clearer to me that we had a problem and what it was. I'd like to do away with that side yard setback being 10% of the average lot width. That just doesn't make sense to me. I'd just as soon make it simple and go five feet across the board for accessory. The other thing is that we've got different standards that we're trying to build in depending on the height of something. So, it's kind of a standard, at least for R1, is primary buildings 40 feet tall. Any other building is 35 feet. Why can't we stick with that? And, and maybe it does need to be something different, but right now, because we've got that built into the individual description for R1, and we've got something else built in section 10, they're conflicting with each other. And we need to make sure we catch all of those things. If there's something missing, then people out there won't know what applies to them. And if there's overlap, we don't know which one applies. So, what I'd like to suggest is, James and Richard, if you would come back to us with a comprehensive proposal on what setbacks, what the standards and criteria ought to be, especially residential. We'll worry about commercial later, but because residential is 85% of all zoning in the, in the city, that needs to be cleaner. And obviously with staff input. I would be fine with continuing the public hearing as soon as we get another more complete Any discussion? Any questions? Richard or James or Andy?
That's a lot to comment on, but I will say that the, the setback rules are, they, they pertain to more things than just the separation of buildings. Now, one example that just comes to mind, anytime we've had reduced setback subdivisions, it gets harder and harder for the builders to meet their grading requirements for the structures because they got less room to do it in. That's just, just one item. But I think, I think the idea of the setbacks and to get, get a certain amount of space between buildings, it has to do with fire protection and space between buildings, but it also has to do with having adequate by, adequate ventilation and things like that.
I agree. Right now, the standard's four feet. I'm suggesting five.
Well, the standard for accessory structures has been four foot in Sherwood for quite some time, whereas for homes, it's been something else.
And it's been 10%, which is not a standard we should be deploying.
For R1, it's been 10% of the lot width up to a maximum of eight foot. Typically, we have eight-foot setbacks unless we have the smallest of the lots that are, you know, that they're able to do a 60-foot lot width, like all the Ralph Coleman homes, those typically are 60-foot lots and they have six-foot side yard setbacks.
My suspicion is that most developers and most builders are probably going to build their houses a little further away than the minimum required, but I think what we need to stand, standardize is the minimum.
No, most of them are pushing the eight foot or the, pushing the minimum, you know, pushing the house as wide as they can.
Whatever, whatever minimum you give.
Yeah, whatever you say the setback is. You put it to five feet, the, the house can be five foot long line at 10.
So, the question is, what should it be instead of basing it on the width of the
Well, generally speaking, as far as the overarching zoning code, I think we're probably about where we need to be. Speaking specifically to this accessory structure ordinance, I, I think we're about where we need to be on that after much deliberation. And I've become before this same body and discussed this idea a couple of times. And the idea was, we were just supposed to go back and get it in right? So, this is confusing to introduce, you know, this is a, this is a confusing idea to introduce, the idea of making such a drastic change from what we've had historically. And I'm not saying it's not a good idea to kick it around.
It needs to be revised. It needs to be cleaned up. And I'm not sure what the standard should be and what the minimum ought to be.
I just came up here to tell you what I thought, my opinion was.
Thank you.
Public hearing, I guess I can speak. Andy say my name?
Yeah.
Steve Dear, 10,000 Miller Road. I kind of agree with Andy because we put subdivisions in for their 60-foot lots and if same builder's not building all of them, that six foot's kind of touchy. If you're building three or four houses there, that six foot, you can make it work as far as the drainage and everything. But on our subdivisions, if we're putting in a 75-foot lot, I mean, y'all can change it to what you want, but I'll probably keep in the bill's assurance that they are required to do 10%. So, uh, it's just, I've seen too many of the drainage problems that you have with the same builder on that type of space is building next door to each other. It just doesn't work out very well.
Thank you. Hold the next item.
Okay. 2014 Arkansas Energy Code for New Building Construction Supplements and Amendments.
Mr. Chairman, the reason I asked is to be added to the agendas. We, we've received this with a mandate from the state that it has to be passed. And I just want to make sure that we don't have anything existing that satisfies this requirement. I just don't want to overlap if I can help it. Could you speak to that, Andy?
Yes, we, we don't. We've, we've kind of been intentionally dragging our feet. But we're ultimately going to have to adopt it. We were just kind of hoping to wait for the very last minute, you know, and I.
I think we're there.
Drive now. What happened is the state legislature came up with a, an energy code and kind of rolled it out, which is really, you know, a real exception to the way things are usually done. And at any rate, the Energy Office has since, this became law, has kind of got their act together and they've got things in place now. Actually, when it became law, some of the basic requirements such, for example, you're supposed to have a, a sticker that the Energy Office furnishes to stick inside your electrical panel to write these different criteria for the energy efficient ratings of different components of a house. They didn't have the stickers available. The guy that was running the program quit like the week this passed into law and blah, blah, blah. But they have come a long way. We are ultimately faced with adopting this or we are subject properly to getting fined. Uh, my recommendation would be that we go ahead and get, get a, get an ordinance drafted to adopt it and that we push for job, adoption to make it effective January 1, 2019 because that's just when we normally roll out changes for all our builders. That's when they're expecting. You know, we, we start telling them about it September, October, stuff that's coming down the pipe. So, anything new that they bid, they can factor in and it will make some changes to the way the houses are being built.
Okay, well, that was helpful. Thank you. Um, yeah, I've got an ordinance ready to go.
What's in it? Just out of curiosity, what, what's in this energy code?
Essentially, it's not a drastic change to the R values and things that we're going to now. What they're requiring is, you know, it's kind of one of these deals where they pass this law and they're saying, okay, you guys enforce it well, but why this thing is written, and I'll, I'll get into the more details here in a minute, you would just about have to babysit a job from the time it's being framed to the time it's finished to ensure compliance. So, a lot of the stuff they're saying, this needs to happen, we're not going to be able to really check it. Stuff like you're supposed to, like on a crossface house, you're supposed to caulk between the rim joist and the seal plate and et cetera, et cetera. And they're requiring some type of a air barrier to be behind all tub shower units. Uh, you know, just a lot of different things. And then some changes to the heating and air, insulating, the ductwork requirements. And then, and then some things that are just, you know, if you've done this kind of work, I mean, it's just kind of like, just for example, all, all outlets, uh, sealing boxes, lock fixture boxes, cans, whatever, any penetration through the sheet rock through the walls or ceiling are supposed to be caulked now. Now, I'm telling you, just caulking a wall box up next to the cut edge of sheet rock is a difficult thing to do. So, I don't know, you know, we're going to have to adopt the code. I don't know how, you know, I'm not going to say we're going to be, you know, well, Paul's going to be in charge of the enforcement of that.
Yeah, you know.
But anyway, we're going to have to adopt it. We, we, we just have to do it. And it's, you know, I think we wait it to the last minute that we can.
You know, I, I read that about all the caulking and sealing and it, a builder's going to need a pickup truck load of caulking tubes. It, it was just unbelievable.
I think the whole thing was passed just to make some kind of a mandate to get federal money is what the whole, whole deal's all about, you know? But, but, but any rate, the time has gone. They kept calling me this year and I wouldn't call them. But finally, they called Steve, so now they're on the hook now.
Are there any comments from the public? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. Do you need a vote?
Do you need a measure of?
It's okay to go to council.
Uh, do you need a motion to approve it?
Yes.
A move that we approve the new energy code mandated by the state.
All second.
Do you have any motion in a second?
Martin.
Aye.
Middleton.
Aye.
Bruno.
Aye.
Gillum.
There you go.
Digital zoning map.
Uh, so what you see on the screen is the result of the ongoing work that has been being done by Metro Plan to redraft the zoning map. There are a few principal items that were a result of this. Uh, in a lot of ways, what this, what this represents are boundary corrections for the, the zones within the city, not necessarily changing zoning so much, unless there are areas that we have documentation that there was either an intent on the city's part to rezone a property or some sort of ordinance that has been missed at some point in time. Uh, but essentially, it's, it's meant to reconcile these zoning boundaries to the parcel lines that are developed by the assessor's office so that it more accurately reflects actual boundaries of properties, better aligning them to, to street center lines, natural barriers, city limits, things of that nature. Additionally, you'll notice here in the center part of town, this area, previously, that was a floodplain zone and there was no floodplain zone in the zoning code, so it wasn't an actual zone that existed. Uh, and so now it has been changed to R1 on this version of the map. So, I've got some examples of changes in terms of what, what do these changes actually look like in a, in a real case situation? So, you can see here on the, the plate on the left is the current zoning map, the plate on the right is the updated zoning map. Uh, and so, you can tell that the, the boundary on the southern portion of this map is particularly irregular. Uh, so what's happened is this property was zoned, it was since, since developed, uh, and so those, these zoning boundaries were never, were never changed. And so, it's somewhat, you have parcels in there that are partly R3 and partly R1. And so, attempt to reconcile and correct those, you know, logical matters, what this plate represents. Uh, this plate represents where the, on the left is the existing, on the right is the proposed. The left indicates the floodplain zone, uh, which is a non-existent zone. Uh, and so, the updated zoning map correctly indicates that no longer is distant, thus it's zoned as R1. Uh, and then finally, one of the, one of the big, big parts of this is getting the ACAS overlay zone, overlay zoning reflected into the zoning map. So, here are, are the APZ zones that are inside the city. But it is worth noting that within a very considerable discussion with our legal counsel, with the Arkansas Municipal League, it's been determined that the city additionally has a responsibility for controlling zoning in this area as it pertains to the, the ACAS APZ zone out here. And so, that's additionally reflected in the, on the city zoning map as, as part of it, applying with, with that state law that was passed. Any questions?
What did you call that zone?
ACAS.
Okay.
Yeah.
I didn't have your due, sorry. City council adopted.
City council adopted ordinance 1744, which adopted an overlay district that just, for whatever reason, never made it to the zoning map. That's now in there, but the recent state legislation also mandated cities to exercise that authority outside the city limits. And we're still trying to figure out what to do with that one.
Getting back to those R3 and R1, the, the R3 that was the jagged line that cut through properties, uh, it seemed as if they were already developed as R1, that they ought to be R1. And then the other thing is, if it was previously R3, how can we arbitrarily take part of it and say, okay, well, it's R1 now?
You're, you're saying re-reconciling these boundaries. So, that's, that's why as a result of this action, there's a public hearing and the, the map is essentially being read adopted. Now, that, that's not to say after we go through the end of the plan process and as a result of the, the conference of plan, there may be zoning changes that are recommended as part of that. But I think in, in the context of those, sort of the broader sense of what the, the future vision of the community is, that we might take those up at this time. The intent of this action was really to reconcile the existing boundaries that are on the ground, or not on the ground, reconcile the existing boundaries that are within the zoning map to what's actually on the ground.
It's not so much actually was on the ground, it was as close an approximation of what the boundary looked like it ought to be. From the, on the original map, not changing any of the zoning, but what it, what we think it meant it was to be on the original map, which wasn't necessarily following parcel boundaries that didn't exist. That, that was the original problem. At this point, we really don't want to change the zoning because this, this is not an exercise in rezoning. It's an exercise in getting the map as accurate as we can. Now, if somebody can bring to our attention that a property actually did get rezoned and we didn't account for it, we need to fix that. And there's a couple of those.
Yeah, and so, the, the staff is actually requesting that this public hearing be left open for three months for that, that type of consideration. Uh, we're going to put the, the zoning map in the lobby at City Hall on a, on a home core so that people can come and examine their, their zoning on their individual property. Uh, and if they've, they've got credible documentation or if they, or if they can tap into Paul's brain, that might be another way to, to access some credible information. Uh, if there's, if there's additional errors, that's, that's really what we're intending to do, is to clean up, clean up errors where, where maybe rezonings weren't reflected and get the, the boundaries reconciled to parcel boundaries and treat natural boundaries and all of those.
If we get sufficient public input. If we get sufficient public input about what people think the boundary should be based on what's really on the ground, this would be the time to consider it. But we're not going to act preemptively. We're going to act in response to what citizens are telling us.
Exactly.
Okay.
There are certainly changes I would love to.
Me too.
Exercising some level of constraint.
One other thing I'll bring up, if you'll scan the map down to Trammell Road. That little area there where it's got red lines in it. When we put this together, Metro Plan pointed out to us that the state's geographic information office, which is the repository for mapping of the state, including the official city limit boundaries, showed that boundary in the black line on top of the C3. The, the dash line above that is where it has historically been shown, so we just quite frankly called them and said, what's going on here? And Pulaski County Planning discovered that in fact it is the red line, so we will put it, we will get the state to change the official boundary line to match what we think it is. That's the second boundary question we've had in the past year. Hopefully, we'll get them all fixed. Other thing is, this map is on the city's webpage, so if you want to look at it, enjoy. Are there any questions, suggestions, or comments? Like, like he said, I, my sense is, I want to leave this open for a reasonable period of time so the citizens have an opportunity to look at it and make comments. My thinking was, a couple of months, if we get a lot of feedback, we can hold it open longer. But my sense is, hold it for a couple of months, see what kind of comments we get and then be prepared to take it to the council. Well, I'll call the hearing closed. No further comments, we'll move along.
Digital zoning code.
So, this copy, in, in a similar vein of cleanup, one of the things that, that through working, we've realized that the existing zoning code, not all of the changes to the zoning code have actually been included in the book. So, it gets somewhat confusing for staff when interpreting compliance, site plans, or as it relates to just general compliance determination. With that, that there was a real need to take all of the things that have been passed, make sure that we've got, you know, a good record of everything and put it into one sort of master codebook. And so, transitioning from what we've traditionally looked at in terms of a zoning ordinance is something that is a, a zoning code that has all of these different ordinances that have changed the zoning code, zoning ordinance over time into a, into a code. And so, this is really not envisioning, in a lot of ways, any significant changes to the zoning code. There are a few things that we considered, such as the, the driveway revisions that were plowed into this, rather than advancing that up to the, to the city council. So, in, in a lot of ways, this, this is just a general cleaning up, clarifying language in a precise manner where, where we can, but it does not really envision any substantial changes to the existing zoning ordinance.
One of the bigger changes is that now there is a section in there for overlay districts, and I want to bring it up. I have just, because there is an ordinance on the books that was never specifically included in the zoning book, it needs to be because an overlay district is a zoning district. And my initial inclination was to leave it out because we know it has to be changed because there's been some revisions by the Air Force in their studies. After talking with council, we probably need to go ahead and include the language from that ordinance in this draft to be submitted to the council because it's on the map and it is a provision of zoning.
I, I don't have any further comment.
You see, only other thing, which I mentioned earlier that I discovered today is that we've got covered and uncovered decks mentioned in three different places, so we need to get rid of two of them. We'll probably be catching some stuff like this over time, but, and the other thing I want to mention is that we have a municipal code. Title 14 of the municipal code is zoning. Overlay districts are included in Title 15 subdivision regulations. That's why we never found it before now. What we've, and Title 14 includes a provision that allows the mayor to buy property, which has nothing whatsoever to do with zoning. So, what we're planning on doing is completely replacing what's currently in the municipal code at Title 14 with this. And from now on, instead of amending ordinances, we'll be amending the code. Hopefully, that'll keep it cleaner.
And one thing, one thing I would add that I, I neglected to mention previously, the reason that we're not really envisioning a lot of, a lot of changes to this is really felt that it was very important to get a handle on what the regulations actually are, what's actually on the books, and know what those are all in one single document before we set about changing things because inevitably, things often happen where you look in one part of the code, start thinking about changing it, we're trying to interpret it and then realize that there's a ordinance revision that has taken place that may supersede that that you're unaware of. And so, from, from a practical standpoint of simply just trying to maintain compliance, this was a necessary step before a lot of revisions could be considered.
With that overview, I'll open a public hearing, invite anybody who has comments or concerns to address it. You would give your name and sign in, please.
I'm Mike Anderson, I'm at 2507 Bear Skin Drive. Is, is this, is this gonna be left open? Is this something that you're giving us to it or something you're working on? I don't quite understand where we're going here.
Depending on the commission's preference, we propose to adopt it and send it to the city council at this meeting.
Okay. I just haven't seen it and I just, so I can't really comment off.
I have a question. Over here on page eight of 110, conditional use permits, conditional use review, general purpose. Purpose of this.
Want to turn your mic on?
Is it, yeah, it should be. I'm just not speaking into it. Okay. Uh, conditional use permits, conditional use review, general purpose. The purpose of this section is to set forth procedures for processing conditional uses and to establish standards by which conditional uses can be evaluated. The planning commission shall hear and recommend, in accordance with the provisions of this code, each individual request for conditional use permits. Only the respective zoning classifications may be requested for conditional use authorization. I don't understand that word. And I, I mean, what, what is the, only the respective zoning classifications may be requested? What are the respective zoning classifications we're talking about?
What, what, what that means is something has to be listed as a conditional use to be able to be reviewed as a conditional. So, let's say that I wanted to, let's say it's not, it's not a use that's in the use table, well, let's say that I wanted to operate zoo. Grab a thousand acres and want to operate a zoo, it's in R1. What this is saying, since that's not in the use table and it's not specifically listed as a conditional use, then I could not apply for a conditional use permit to operate a zoo in R1.
So, in this, in that sentence, respective means the previously listed zoning classifications that are in the book.
I think, I think that's existing language from the code. I, I, I agree that, that it's confusing what the, the intent is if it's not as specifically listed as a conditional use, then you can't apply.
Okay. I'll go along with that.
That's one of those things that we need to change. There's, if you, if you read, if, if you just open it up in any, in any portion, you'll find something that might be confusing that you want to check. I, I almost guarantee it.
Hopefully, we got rid of all the misspellings, and there were a few. My favorite was in the open space district, which said it was desirable for gold courses and county clubs. We, we made that golf a country.
Yeah. Well, being that this is a digital.
I'm Doris Anderson.
Will this be continuing living document updated as we go?
That's the purpose of this, yes. As soon as the council adopts an ordinance amending some portion of this, it should be reflected on the site within 24 hours. Yes.
I'm Doris Anderson, 2507 Bear Skin Drive. This particular document that should appear on the City of Sherwood's website at some point has been replaced by the city zoning map. I don't know exactly when it occurred, but it happened sometime in the last two weeks. So, this document no longer appears on the city's website.
That's not good.
Not good.
Public hearing is closed. Commission, we need to decide.
Let's do it. I move to accept it. Take it to council.
We have a motion in a second.
Martin?
Aye.
Middleton?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Gillum?
Aye.
James, I'll need version with the watermark top and, and as final. Okay. Digital to me.
You may actually just pop the rubber there.
Okay. I'm gonna, because the ordinance I'm gonna submit is not gonna have this attached. It, it makes reference that it's in the judicial realm as well, and that's what it's gonna say. But I'm gonna wanna send a copy digitally to everybody that can, prior to the meeting. Thank you.
Preliminary flat plat for Lot 1 for Security Bank Marler Engineering Agent.
So, this application is also additionally tied to a site plan application. This is located at the corner of Indian Bay Drive at Brockington. This was a part of a previous PCD application or plan, plan commercial development application that involved the bank and then additionally, a site plan for a, a self-storage facility on this. So, they are moving forward with just this individual property, which the property is zoned C2. So, in looking at the plat application, it's a .96 acre lot. Brockington Road is a minor arterial that's fully built to standards with about 22,000 vehicles per day near the site. Indian Bay Drive is a collector that's fully built to city standards. So, looking at that, we'll discuss this more with the individual use on the, the site plan application, but it's estimated that the bank could generate about 511 vehicle trips per day, although that's not necessarily relevant to the preliminary plat, file plat application. Staff had two comments on this particular item. One indicated, asking for an indication of note citing the source of water. That particular note was provided on the updated plans. And then also asking for an indication of the date of the survey, that was addressed. So, that recommendation for action on this item is, and that this is, the staff report is reflected for both items nine and 10, the preliminary plat and final plat. Those, the, the comments were applied to that.
Any motion?
Okay, I'll do it. Take a motion to approve it.
Is this the preliminary and/or the final?
Both.
The motion is to approve the preliminary and final plat of Lot 1 for Security Bank. Do we have a second?
Lucen did.
Martin?
Aye.
Middleton?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Gillum?
Aye.
A site plan for Lot 1 for Security Bank Marler Engineering Agent.
So, this is the same site, you'll notice from this map indication, as I stated previously, this is a .96 acre lot. What they are proposing is a 3,452 square foot bank with drive-throughs located on the rear portion. There'll be an entry off of Brockington and an entry off of Indian Bay Drive with the drive-throughs on the rear side of the property. There will be approximately 25 parking spaces on the site, and this is tied to the application that was just approved. Here is a map indicating the zoning for the site, so it's located in C2. You'll notice with the assisted living facility across the way, that across the street, that's partially C2 and R3, and then there's C3 across Brockington. So, the, the zoning for this particular property is in compliance. And then also additionally, here is the indication from what is the land use plan, which indicates for community shopping along this corridor with multifamily being the orange back here and floodplain indication there. One of the, the first comments that we had were a, a request for the architectural elevations for the structure to determine compliance. Looking at that, you see here, here's an image of that based on all the materials that are used, EFS, brick, all of these other materials. These all meet, they're on compliance with the, the wall surface standards, the building design standards. So, that's what the, this is the appearance of what the bank will look like on Brockington. So, it's a, a fairly standard for Security Bank. Additional comments, on the rear portion of the site plan, there's a requirement for peripheral landscaping. They had peripheral trees that were located there, but we additionally required, is a requirement of the landscaping requirements that there be shrubs. Those shrubs are meant to screen the, the parking lot, and so that was added with the, along the east and south property lines. Although, they're really only screening woods now, the idea is that those other properties will be developed at some time, at some point, and so that screening will be necessary. Additionally, we, we indicated that they needed to add a, a note for that auto irrigation system would be required. So, all of those, all of those comments have been addressed and the recommendation for action is approval with our general conditions of approval pertaining to work site man.
I have one comment, I was just looking here in the zoning code, chapter 1406, office districts, 140603 district restrictions. Any lighting shall be placed so as to reflect away from adjacent residential development, no excessive noise. I, I really don't like light pollution, and we've got plenty of it in Sherwood. And so, the one thing I would, we do have a nursing home across the street, so I would like to caution them to not please light up the whole area like Airfield. like to caution them to not please light up the whole area like air feet.
Is the developer or engineer here?
Bear Davidson with half plus Marler. And Mr. Gillum, regarding your question, my understanding for the plans for site lighting are just typical pedestal lights and not, not an excessive amount, one to two per property line, and then with, with lighting that's mounted on the exterior of the building that's typical for a First Security site like you're used to seeing.
Well, and that lighting that's mounted on the side of the building is where my, where I have a problem with it. Particularly if you go down to the gas station that's due south of this area, there, that gas station has lights that shine through all the bedroom windows of the houses behind it.
Yes, sir.
And I don't want that to happen.
Right.
Although there are no lights, there's nothing but woods behind them. But really, you shouldn't have any light that falls off of your property, period. That's what I've got to say.
Right. And, and as part of this, this planning submittal, this site plan submittal, that doesn't include like a photometric plan, but a, but the full set of construction drawings, which include the MEP plans, will, will have some information regarding the photometrics of the, of the property. They just weren't included as part of this site plan submittal. So there's some additional review that could be done prior to receiving a building permit, for instance, when those construction plans are reviewed. Mr. Penn, would you, would you agree to that? I mean, if you, I don't know if you want to comment.
Yes, that's true. We can take your comments under advisement and be sure that those are checked, but that would be something that would be reviewed during the construction plan phase, prior to issuing a building permit.
Good deal.
Any other questions?
Motion for the site plan.
We have a motion and a second. Please call over.
Martin.
Aye.
Middleton.
Aye.
Bruno.
Aye.
Gillum.
Aye.
A preliminary plat for lots 1 and 2, CPEG Edition, Marler Engineering.
Yes, so this, this property is located off of Jacksonville Cut Off Road. There, there it's intersection with Highway 107. So it's the, the address is 7900 Jacksonville Cut Off. This is also being represented by half Marler. It's for preliminary plat and final plat approval. The reason for this, this is unplatted property, and the applicant's, the applicant is wanting to be able to split off the single-family home away from the manufactured home park that, that is located on the lot, on, on this property. And so it's, rather than it being a, a traditional lot split, this is being handled as a, as a plat for that reason, because the property has never been platted. Jacksonville Cut Off is already improved at the site, and it would not make sense to require any improvements in this particular location. It is a two-lot subdivision on 1.41 acres. With that, looking at our comments, staff had one, one comment that the Jacksonville Cut Off Road is a minor arterial, which being a minor arterial, the master street plan right-of-way indicates 80 feet of right-of-way, which would be 40 feet from center line on their property. And so we want it indicated on the plat, a dedication of 40 feet of right-of-way as a result of that. So the recommendation for action on this particular item is to basically, for both items.
Discussion.
No motion to approve both.
Second.
So we have a motion to approve the preliminary and final plats for lots 1 and 2, CPG Edition.
Martin.
Aye.
Middleton.
Aye.
Bruno.
Aye.
Gillum. A preliminary plat for Stone Hill Edition, Phase 7, Thomas Engineering Agent.
So this property is at the end of Phelps Bar near its intersection with Rock Ridge Road. It's a preliminary plat approval request for 43 lot subdivision on 36.92 acres with almost 2,000 millennial feet of streets. The subdivision will have access to Brockington via Phelps Bar to Maryland and via the, the new extension of Rapid Water Drive that's being built with a new subdivision that's being constructed. So there will be an entrance coming out to the north and an entrance coming out here. Water and sewer services present at the site. Based on analysis of 43 lots, single-family dwelling lots, staff estimates that the, the use will generate about 412 vehicle trips per, per typical weekday is what we, we estimate with this. I won't go, won't go through all of our, all of our comments, but highlight our, our main ones with the approval for contingencies. Our contingencies are provided in updated bill of assurance with the final plat application that provides clear details on the allowed uses of the green belt. If you look here, this is the, and so this indicates in hatching the green belt that is intended to be used as a sewer and green belt easement, that will sort of be an amenity for the subdivision and hopefully long-term be a location of a, of a future city trail. And so with the updated file bill of assurance, we want the issues of ownership and whether it's an easement or not cleared up through that, that document so that, so that it's very clear. When we review the preliminary plat application, we're really just asking to see how that bill of assurance is going to be construct, set up, but we're not necessarily concerned completely with it until we do the final plat application. So that, that is listed as a contingency on the application. The second would be providing full construction plans to be approved by the city engineer. This would include storm drainage, streets, water and sewer design. And then thirdly would be providing verification, verification of ownership of lands being purchased to the west prior to approval of construction plans. When staff reviewed this in the, in the first submittal, the boundary line is this line that runs through all of these lots. The applicant contacted the adjacent property owner about purchase of, of these areas because that property would not be useful to the adjacent property owner about plating those. And so as a, prior to approval of the, the construction plans, we need to make sure that the improvements that are going to be made are being made on property that the applicant So those, those are our contingencies. We have our general contingencies, conditions of approval. So the staff recommendation for this is the approval with the three contingencies.
You're saying this is a plat on two separate ownerships?
Currently. And it's, it's just a, sort of the nature of going through, that, that was one thing that we had talked to the applicant about, perhaps looking at the adjacent property for purchase as it would be advantageous for all the parties involved. And Mr. Pennell could probably speak more to that.
James is correct that right now it's two different ownerships, but the, the owner of the major area there is going to purchase the area to the west of it, and all he's waiting for is for approval of this preliminary plat. Preliminary plat will kind of trigger the sale of, of the property, and then it'll all be one ownership, it'll all be platted as one, by one owner when, when it's all finished.
Any questions?
The other owner's metropolitan, is that correct?
That's correct.
That's what I thought.
Any other motion?
Motion to approve the preliminary plat with the, with the contingencies.
Second. I have a motion and a second.
Martin.
Aye.
Middleton.
Aye.
Bruno.
Aye.
Gillum. A site plan for H2O Sports Bond Consulting Engineers Agent.
Yes, so this is located at 4100 Rixey Road for H2O Sports. This is site plan approval. The current use is a boat dealership and the property is zoned C4. Here is sort of the, the location of that. Right here is, to the, to the left, one may call it 67167. I like to refer to it as Future I-57, as my, my name for that, also the federal government's name. This request is for site plan approval for expansion of the existing H2O Sports dealership site with the approximately 7,400 square foot maintenance structure that will be added sort of behind the structure that's on the east side of the property over here where this is. Modification of the site will also include expansion of the maintenance yard behind the gate. So all of the, all of the construction is occurring in an area that will not be publicly accessible, that is behind it, behind the gate, and will all be maintained in an area that, that the public's not going to have access. Some of the conditions in looking at this, Rixey Road is a collector that's not fully built to standards, has about approximately 3,680 near the site. Based on analysis, it's not estimated that, that the use will generate additional traffic as a result of the expansion, because this is relating to the maintenance, so it's not anticipated that there's, there's going to be a great deal more traffic. Here is a look at how the zoning lays out for this with the property being C4. Then you look at the land use plan indicated for strip development, which would necessarily be, be a C4 property. Looking at our, our comments, we had some, some questions about delineating areas that are, would be gravelled, those things were addressed. We had some questions and concerns about what portions of the property are in the floodplain and what would be in the floodplain as a result of later after this. It was, we since got verification from the, from the applicant that, that there will be no change in the floodplain and none of the construction will be occurring in the floodplain, so there's really no, no impact with that. Had some questions about the existing and proposed fences. All of the existing fencing is existing and it's a six-foot chain link fence. And then there was a requirement for a minimum six-foot landscape perimeter around the vehicle use area on the back end of the yard, and so they're maintaining larger than a, larger than that, which would be a, a sodded area. So recommendation for action on this is approval with the, the sort of the standard general condition.
Concerns? Motions?
Motion. Bush for approval with contingencies.
Second. I have a motion and a second.
Martin.
Aye.
Middleton.
Aye.
Bruno.
Aye.
Gillum.
Aye.
Is there any old business that we need to attend to?
We do need to set up a public hearing for next month to discuss co-change as it relates to self-storage facilities as a conditional use in the C3 zone.
We will schedule that. We had said at the last meeting that we wanted a public hearing. We need to schedule it for next month. Are there any new business? I have a motion to stop doing this.